Seven o'clock is stand for the pledge, please. Commissioner Hicks will not be with us this evening, he's out of town. Okay. We get the motion to accept the minutes of January the 2nd.
That's a move.
Second.
Any corrections or additions? Carry none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carried. The motion accept the financial report and payment of the bills.
That's a move.
Seconding. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carried. The budget amendment, Steve.
I guess I want tonight budget amendment number 2013-013 to recognize $9,256 of seed funds forfeited to town for the purpose of purchasing a DVR for recording the sale on prisoner processing areas at Pete's Department side. And if you recall, this has been discussed at the workshop last week.
Okay. Motion accept budget amendment 2013-013.
That's a move.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carried. Okay, Ken Severn Trent.
Good evening, Mayor Council. I'd like to give you a report, staff's report on the order of wastewater treatment facilities for the month of November and December. There's a few things I wanted to let you know about, but I'd like to go over the results. The BOD for the month of November was 2.6, the limit's 30. Suspended solids was 1.4, limit 30. The total nitrogen average 1.5 milligrams per liter and the permit's based on 4.0 milligrams per liter. The total phosphorus average on the sheet is 3.5, but the average was .04. So that's a type of there, I'll have to get that taken off. So November was a good, another good month of excellent discharge. Some of the things I just wanted to touch on was we, when the town received an appropriations permit for the wells for French Town Road, French Town Road, one of the conditions of the appropriations permit was that the town initiate a monitoring program of those wells, French Town Road and surrounding roads on French Town Road, private wells, as part of the condition of that appropriations permit. And I wanted you to know that we initiated that monitoring program and we took our first round of level recordings on those wells, so we've got some good benchmark readings to start off with. Now, right now, we're required to do that two times per year. And once those wells down, go online, then it'll be more often than not. But at least we've got that, the program is set and it's started. One other thing, another thing I wanted to let you know is that one of our employees retired, Jim LaFieu, he was in, he ran our maintenance program, pretty much, at the facilities, and he retired with Florida. Lucky guy. Anyway, we replaced him with Ross Welch. And Ross is a great addition to our staff. He was key, when they built the treatment plant, he worked, well, he worked for Sherwood Logan, and Sherwood Logan was a large supplier of the, a lot of the equipment for the new facility for the wastewater plant. And Ross is, so he's very familiar with the equipment and a lot of the electronics, the SCADA system and that, and that type of work. So he's going to be a great addition for us. And hopefully, we'll, we're going to take you some kind of money. Another thing I wanted to let you know is that we had two inspections in the month of November, December, and November, A-Class was there, inspected our dryer, the dryer system, sludge dryer, the biostuff dryer system. And he was very pleased, all the records were in good shape, and we were in real good shape there. And then also, we had an inspection the week after Christmas with MDE, was there, Randy Denny was there, inspected the facility and all the pumping stations, and that went real well also. And one thing I just wanted to bring to your attention was, one of the, one of the things that MDE wanted town to accomplish this past year, 2012, was to develop a stormwater pollution prevention plan. And in 2002, the town received a general permit, and this, and the general permit required that this stormwater prevention plan be developed, and it had never been done. And so I talked with Lewis last year about getting this done, and we, you know, worked together, and we said, well, we'll do it in-house. So I want to tell you that we did accomplish that task, and this is, this is a stormwater pollution prevention plan that we developed in-house for the wastewater treatment facility. And I'll get the copy to Lewis, and he can, him and his staff can review it and add or delete or whatever they want to do with it. But this was part of the inspection from MDE a couple of weeks ago, when they came, that was one, the first thing they said, did you guys get the stormwater prevention plan completed? And we said, yes, we did. And so he did review it, and he was pretty, very happy, very pleased. So I just wanted to show it to you, but I'd like to get you all a copy, although you can review it, it's, it's pretty good stuff. But anyway, there is a summation in here that there's, you know, after you look at every, you know, if you go through the, and look at the stormwater manholes and the stormwater inlets of the system, and you look at the system in totality, which honestly, I've never done that before, and after you look at all that, you see, you learn, you see the condition of it, and basically, it's in really very good condition. Very good condition. I mean, it's been here a long time, it's probably been there since, I don't know when the first plant was put in, so probably in the '30s. So anyway, there's some things that we need to take care of, but they're minor things. So that's, that's good news, and I think that's about it.
What are we doing with the wells that we've been working on? We got the one up in the High Hall, and there's supposed to be one, I think, behind the Acme, but I understand that might be in the floodplain, and then one down by Elk Landing.
The vertical level of the well behind Acme is not in the floodplain, nor is it sticks up above the floodplain. And then it's also my understanding that there, the, that that floodplain is going to be reduced as well. I heard was in a year or so, but you never know about that. But anyway, I guess when the town put the well in originally, it was not in the floodplain, and then they, the well was a permitted well, it was permitted up until like 1994, and then the permit lapsed. So at that time, it was not in floodplain, so then I guess MDE drew up a new coordinates for that area, and then when they drew that up, and so now horizontally, it would be in the current floodplain, vertically it's not, so it's actually sticks up above the floodplain. So I would still pursue that, and I would pursue the, the Elk Landing. And well number two, the original well number two, behind Denny's, that, that well was drilled, and it came out to be a good well, it's about 175 gallon, and the work quality was excellent, excellent water. So I, I would have, I would continue to pursue that for backup wells. I congratulate you guys on the, on the agreement that you came up with, the artesian, I think it's going to serve the town very well. But it's always good to have backup wells.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah. So I know you guys all knew that, so. Yeah, I'm not sure what the town's schedule is for the, this other well, well, I'm not sure what's going on right there.
How's that, you said something about being in the floodplain, Louis, we can't use that one at all, or?
I'm not recommending use the well number four, but we need to pursue the Elk Landing well. I've engaged Jeff Hernand, he's a senior hydrologist, geo-hydrologist with the KCI, and we'll identify a point where we can dig it and then put the well in, and we get a whole base in show to do it. Only the way to spring all the people out there working on that, on that urgency.
Well, I'll be, there'll be a second well at least, we'll get down there. Okay. You might have anything else?
Thanks, Ken.
Okay, Louis.
The first item I have is a contract with the fireworks extravaganza, they submitted a contract to the town for 4th of July fireworks in Meadow Park. Agreement is for the display at a cost of $15,330, upfront price of $7,665, with a follow-up then days after it, after the display of $7,665. The town will secure the site as we always do and get the fire marshal permit. The Tension is very skilled with doing that, she normally gets the permit. The rain day scheduled for July 5th, I don't think we've already used the rain day, I think we've been fortunate to have the display. So I need the board's authorization to proceed with that contract if you, if you want to pursue the fireworks this year.
Okay. All right, I have a motion to accept the fireworks contract for this year.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carried.
KCI wayfinding signs, KCI submitted proposal on January 8th to provide engineering and related services to developing wayfinding signs that would be acceptable to state highway administration for placement in state highway administration's right, rights of way, where the, where the four locations for the type of signs were developing under Phase 1. The scope includes development of specifications for four Type B signs. The locations will be four locations in the town, and the signs, the specs will be submitted to the state highway for review and approval, and once approved, we would put those out for bid, purchase signs, and then have the signs installed. The total for engineering costs for Phase 1 of this project is $8,250. Under Phase 2, scope of services include the development of specifications for two smaller signs to be placed in the state private way. These signs would be priced, the work for development of these signs, the specification for the state highway is $2,099. Total price of the engineering for both phases is $11,101.50. I have, I have what the signs, I don't know if the boards have seen these or not, I think the mayor has.
Yeah.
It's a few signs, a hundred signs.
I don't know if we could have Ed come up with a, if we were allowed, he could do those signs?
I don't know, depends on the, the state has to approve all specifications for signs. If he could prepare a sign that met their specifications, of course he could. The signs are proposed for location of 213, 279, 213 Route 40, North Street, and 279, and Delaware Avenue and Route 40, that's a four location for this sign. He, he's mostly a welder and a fabricator of metal. I don't think the state would permit metal signs because they have the immediate crash mitigation standards.
Breakaway, yeah.
But we'll, we'll have to find out.
Okay. Well, if we can incorporate some of this design into a philosophy, maybe, you know, that's what I was thinking too. Okay. All right, I have a motion to get the KCI's proposal for the wayfinding signs.
Can you?
Second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carried.
Permit with public works agreement with Cecil County pursuant to the town's planning of the Warner Road, the forced main upgrade between Muddy Lane and Chapel 1, we have to bore under Muddy Lane, put the replacement main in. The Cecil County requires a public works agreement for us to do that. And prepared, the agreement was sent to Cecil County, reviewed by council for Cecil County, and I think Mr. Wilson also reviewed it for the town, and found it acceptable. I would ask that the board execute the agreement with Cecil County. Basically, the county, the count would assure the county that we would repair the road if it's damaged to their specifications, which is what, I've been here a long time, I've had a public works agreement with the county before, so it's kind of a new, new thing on radar for us. That's the rule.
Okay. All right, I have a motion to accept the Cecil County Public Works Agreement.
Hello.
Second.
Second.
Any further discussions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carried.
Last item I have is ordinance 1-213, this is for adoption, the Elton Police Pension Plan. Ordinance 1-213 amends the town code chapter 2.28, the Elton Police Pension Plan, specifically revising the definitions of normal retirement age and normal retirement date. Normal retirement age is the earlier of the date at which the participant, which is the officer participating in the plan, completes 25 years of service, or the date in which the participant attains age 60 and completes 10 years of service. Once they attain either 25 years or 60 and 10 years, they become fully vested and non-forfitable in the plan. Under the normal retirement date means the first day of the month, after the participant reaches his or her normal retirement age, if the participant reaches his or her normal retirement age on the first day of the month, that day should be the date of retirement. These revisions were reviewed by council, Waper Taylor Preston and our labor lawyers, and approved. The necessity of these changes are for, to clarify these particular definitions for the IRS in order for the town to get its termination and private letter ruling, so we can transfer all the money that the officers had previously contributed to the nationwide plan in town, actually, and transfer to the MDE investment group.
Okay. I have a motion to accept ordinance 1-2013, the Elton Police Pension Plan.
So.
Second.
Second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carried.
Sorry.
This is considered old business, but Louis, Buttonwood Road, we discussed, I have a light out out there again, seems this one light, seems the same one, I think we fixed the last time.
Which light?
Out there, Buttonwood Road, the timer, I guess it's, the sensor keeps going bad on it. I think we called before and had it fixed numerous times.
That's a Delmarva pole.
Yeah.
We'll record it.
That's what I have. Mary Jo?
I have no old business.
No?
I just want to thank Michelle and Ms. Lipton, Ed Zipton, Linda Tipton, it's a Lipton, for following up for that. Mr. Ron came in on, to talk about Dudley Street and French Town Road. I went out the next day and noticed there was about maybe five or six utility lights were, were completely off, and one of the issues was dark around the area and a lot of mistress was, was going on. So I know that we called in those numbers, and they came right out within that next couple of days and fixed it, and big difference over there. So I just want to thank them for that. That's it.
Yeah, it's probably old business, it's probably big, it's probably, anyhow, I was riding through often the other day, since I have a lot more free time than I had before, and certainly coming down Bridge Street, and just to see that RMR building, still sitting there after all these years, and I don't know how long that's been. And of course, we discussed, we tried to make changes, but you know, we used to always talk about downtown Elton, and we have visitors coming through Bridge Street. If I was somebody living in Pennsylvania, having come down there all those years, whether it was 10, 15, or 20, I keep saying that same old building that's sitting there, and it's a terrible sight. Whatever we can do with it, I don't know, but certainly, it doesn't speak much for the town of Elton as far as whatever type of program we had for, you know, dising buildings and this, that, and the other, it's just, it's a terrible sight.
Well, it's funny you brought that up, I just, was it yesterday? I believe it was yesterday. I just was talking to, was it Eric?
Eric Frog?
Earl, yeah, right. And I told him about it, and how it was looking, and it's getting shabby and all, and he's supposed to be down here, take a look at it, and will do what he has to do to fill in the, where the plywood was made a fall, it fell off and all, and fix it up, and try and get it cleaned up for us. He does have plans, I think, still, to put some housing over there, but we're waiting for the comprehensive plan to be done and approved, because I think they're changing the zoning over there, so he can put this project up over there. And, because he said he's ready to go, because he's tired of waiting, and he can't sell, do anything with commercial property, so he's got this all drawn out, and he's ready to go as soon as we give him the okay, and he'll be down here and starting the project if we can get that started.
Well, I think we need to be a little more aggressive with him, because he's been saying this for.
I was going to say the same thing.
For years, at lea, I know, I've been 12 years with him, and it's the same thing, he has plans, and there were two people that wanted to purchase that, he won't excel. He wants to rent and build. So we need to be a little more aggressive, because he's not doing anything with that property, and it is an awful, I swear.
There's still some problems with MDE, or something about tearing the walls down, or something we asked him once before about tearing the walls down, but there's something with MDE that they're holding him up, or something like that, I'm not sure how that works.
For the last 10 years. The best way to deal with a situation like that is to identify a plausible method and bring suit against him. I wouldn't, I wouldn't pull around with it, I'd file suit against him, and just sit down with council and figure out what basis of suit they, and then go for it. Don't waste any more time, he, he won't respond otherwise.
Okay.
Then he can wait on a court order, rather than a comprehensive plan.
All right. We can go there.
If there are no grounds under which a suit can be filed, then we won't. I'm not, I'm not saying that we will, I'm saying there has to be grounds, so it would be something we have to explore with council.
Because of many instances, you know, if, if I'm a builder or help somebody else, and I see this guy or girl getting away with it, I'm going to do the same thing. So you put heat on him, you put heat on whoever's doing that, but you know, we don't have no teeth right now yet, but certainly, it's something to think about.
He spent quite a bit of money carrying the guts out of that building. I don't know how much that would cost, but I'm sure he had some kind of arrangement with some salvage people, but it was very extensive work that he did, he did do something. I thought that after that happened, I didn't think that it would be that long after that concrete, when that was completed, that demolition was completed, that he would move forward with commercial project, but I don't think it's financially feasible for him, otherwise I think he would have done it. I think if he just put it to ground and planted grass there, everybody would be satisfied, whether to build or not, I mean, you know, at least when you go down there, it would look like, look nice, you know, I don't think he thinks that way though.
Okay, you have a new business I have, I received a letter from Natasha Zucker, I believe it is, nursing facility from Delaware Technical Community College. Said the purpose of this letter is to confirm that your community will be utilizing, be utilized by groups of first semester Delaware Tech nurses, students, as a setting for their community nursing experience. The students will be presented in the community performing community assessments on the following dates during business hours. Tuesday, January 22nd, Monday the 28th, and Tuesday the 29th. The students will be engaged in community assessments activities, they will be traveling in groups of four, assessing the community by car and occasionally on foot. They will be in their student uniforms and be wearing identification. They are required, they are required to perform a resident interview and also speak to a key informant who can, who can be a business owner or other community leader. They have received instructions from instructor not to knock on doors or attempt to enter homes under any circumstances. They have also participated in community safety seminars conducted by the facility of DTCC. So if you see them around town, walking around, that's what it's all about.
Did they copy that to the local newspapers?
I, nope. No CCs. I don't, just let them know that. That's the only thing I have, Mary Jo, anything?
I have a couple things. One is these signs that have been going up in a lot of places, I'm sure you all seen the graffiti. You know, I don't want to see that get out of control. This, this one happens to be on the wall at Ashton Furniture, there's one in Food Lion parking lot, Howard Street and Delaware Avenue, and some stop signs, but if public works can possibly clean them up or something.
Are they on private property?
I don't, some are, or some are not. But I know you won't go private property, but that, that one there is the Two Sickles, I don't know really what it is, I tried looking it up and couldn't find anything, but I mean, it just looks.
Okay, that's on private property.
It just does not look good for the town, whatever it is popping up places.
Yeah, if they get our signs, we can.
Get there are some stop signs.
Oh, yeah, we can replace those, yeah.
Or I think we could just clean them possibly.
Yeah, get them. And we do have cleaner.
Yeah. And the other thing is the Hurricane Grill and Wings opening, they're opening, a soft off opening on Monday, February 4th, and their grand opening is Thursday, February 7th, with a ribbon cutting, they're having a steel drum band, the Elton High School Band, all kinds of things all day. There's 215 seats in there, and they have a private room of 40 seats, and there'll be 28 outside. So look in the paper, they're going to be doing a lot of giveaways, and it's going to be a really nice new place here in Elton.
Yeah, exciting.
And that's it.
Charlie, anything?
Well, it's supposed to start us on the new high street.
Spring.
I'm talking about the workers that have been working out there.
All the concrete work will be, is finished, and we won't pay till spring, the blacktop factory's closed, there's no way to get the.
Okay, so will they be putting down crosswalks on the street?
Oh, yeah, they'll completely nail and pave and mark old street.
Okay, and my last item is that we all should have received, and you may not have received, an email from Mr. Goodman, who lives on 205 Park Circle, and evidently, he's been having trouble with the resident beside him and all the trash and debris and what have you. Also, I think he contacted public work, and I guess he wants the town going to do to help him in that, in that process. He said he spoke with you, Louis, and I guess I can, oh, 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 he spoke with you, Louis, and evidently, you must have responded to him saying that you're going to get the attorney involved, but what can be done to help the man so he doesn't have that there? You know, according to his letter, he lived there 50 years, and certainly, you know, he doesn't need that, and it does no bad. I went up there this evening on my way home. Now, what were you saying?
I'm saying the complaint's being investigated by our code official, I can override what he's doing, and order public works to clean it all up. But if we do, we'll, we'll, me in the house, we will do it for free, we'll, we'll send people in, and we'll put a lien on it proper, you know, clean up commercial trash.
Well, I guess he would like to see a response, even if you've done nothing, I guess he would like to see a response from somebody saying something, as he said, you know, his neighbors walk through the street and they too talk about how bad it is, but you know, sometime you go to war, you go to war by yourself, and certainly, that's what he's doing right now, even though his neighbors should be complaining as well, because it's just an unsightly, very, I mean, he sent pictures, and you know, just ride by there and you can see the same.
Is it a rental or just a regular resident?
It's a regular resident, yeah.
Regular resident?
Yeah, oh. You know, sometimes people like to hear it from you, even if you don't do anything.
I didn't hear, but John came in and got four thirty for that.
Here we have.
That's it.
Mr. Mayor, if I may, I could elaborate on that subject for you?
Oh, thanks.
Oh, you're here. Yes, we told them there's a meeting now, I figured there's a chance to come back. What, what these people are doing, they're running inside of their house. I went that route, and I was told by Mr. Smith, I think it was, they can't prove that. I'm going to tell you, they told me personally, my wife personally, they bought this. I'm gonna tell you, they told me personally, my wife personally, they bought this U-Haul, used, you know, U-Haul truck, about twenty footer. They go to Baltimore and buy up the storage bins. They bring it home and they store it out in the driveway. This is a two-car wide driveway, three deep, and it's over half full, it's stopped this hot. The garage is full, you can't get anymore in there, inside their house is full, I don't think they get anymore there. You can see that through the windows at night, this is continuing. I complained way back in the spring about it, not a whole lot happened. The pile got a little big, every week they just bring more in. And they're pretty smart about it, the trash is gonna pile up there until after four o'clock tonight. Now piles biggest pickup truck to go out with the borrowers and recyclers. The trash people have stopped and take pictures of it and sent it down to Tracy. Nothing's getting done, this has gotta go, I'm waiting for the rats to show up now. The backyard is just, is not trashed, but the weeds are literally as high as a four-foot pool out back, which is nothing but scum. It's empty, but it's just full of scum. The place is a trash pit.
Where is the address?
Just like it cleaned up.
Where is the address?
Two oh nine Park Circle. You go by there at night, point your way out of here, literally, it's ridiculous. When we get home Monday night, they unload the truck Monday night, the pile is this hot, brown, brown, black plastic bags. This is nuts, this is nuts, we know what they're doing, they're post. They're running a business out of your house. I have business in town, but I have to have my own trash dumpsters, I can't even use the town services, which is my tax money going to waste there. I mean, literally, the trucks out there, five and ten minutes at a time, they stop and get out and have to load all the stuff so they can get going. Just something needs to be done, it's crazy. And when they did get it cleaned up halfway this year, there's still the piles of bricks, building material all sitting in front of his garage. He doesn't clean the whole thing up, you know.
Sex.
Thanks for coming in, sir.
Yeah. Alright. Let's go spy out there and take a look at it, Louis, tomorrow.
First thing we'll do, we have to give a notice, and then after the notice that they don't clean it up, then we, then we move and then we, we have to give a notice before we can clean the property.
My understanding, they had notices, they had letters.
I don't know, because I didn't investigate it, so I don't know what's been done.
We can check with John, see if he's sending letters previous.
He was gone when Dave came in.
Oh, okay. Alright. Is that it, John?
That's it.
Mr. Williams?
Yes, sir. Good evening.
Evening, good evening. You just want to state your name and address?
Well, I'm gonna give you my business address because it might make more sense. One oh two West Main Street in Elton. I am not a citizen of Cecil County, nor Maryland, I live in Delaware. But I am a taxpayer in this county, having a building as well as a business on Main Street. And it's pretty much a couple of things I wanted to speak with you folks about in regards to Main Street itself. This year and every year at Christmas, all the parking meters are covered with a red bag and it says no parking. Now, I'm sure that once upon a time, that was a great idea to encourage retail businesses. I will tell you that the number of businesses that are retail on Main Street now are pretty thin. Also, there are no parking meters in front of any retail business. So in effect, what you've done is stopped collecting revenue on two different areas of Main Street and the adjoining streets next to it, in front of Union Hospital and in front of the courthouse. What happens is that all the employees of Union Hospital park in the free spots. And we know that is because the municipal parking lot where they normally park is empty during Christmas. And at the other end of Main Street, courthouse, that's the lawyers and police and whomever are parking there. We know that because the parking is in back near the ball field, is wide open and empty. The point I'm trying to make is that it's a direct revenue loss to the town and doesn't make a whole lot of sense. So I just bring this stuff to your attention, I've been encouraged to do so because over the years I've looked at that and said, doesn't make sense. You're not accomplishing anything and all you're doing is losing money. Now, if you want to know what to do with money, my second problem is the growing water bills that I'm paying. I use one hundred gallons of water every quarter. I have a commode and a small sink. I am now gonna be paying six hundred dollars a year for water. On top of property taxes, fees and things that I pay in order to run a business, six hundred dollar water bill to me is a little excessive. I've talked to a couple of my neighbors, other than the pizza place and Howard, who use a lot of water, all of us are kind of in the same boat, we're paying a whole lot of money for a little bit of service. I don't know the answer to the problem. I'm sure that with what's going on with EPA in this town and virtually every other small town in this county and actually eastern shore, you're faced with water problems and things that the federal government has imposed upon you. But I would just like to kind of point out that as a small business person, it's an excessive charge. I actually came down and spoke with the person that handles the water bill and said, listen, can I just drop out of the program? Can I just turn off my water? I'll go get bottled water and be a happy camper. The answer was no, I can't do that, I'm compelled to have the water in the sewer. While they may turn off the water, I would still pay the sewer, and the sewer is the overwhelming charge. So it's kind of like I'm stuck, can't do anything about it except come before the commissioners and pray for relief from a very high building. The third thing I kind of want to mention, and it's, I don't really know how to approach this. I've noticed that in my own business, which by the way is imprinted merchandise, branding, advertising specialties, whatever word you wish to use, I get to do a bit of business with the town and it's great and it's appreciated. One of the things I've noticed is that there are other departments that I've approached, Parks and Recreation, Public Works, because they buy t-shirts, and I get no response at all. They won't even return my phone call. I've been told that they purchase these items and I say, well, is it an Elton business? And the answer is no. No offense, chief, but when I signed in, I used a pen with your department's name on it, it was bought mail order. I have a question, how much taxes did that mail order business pay to this town? I know how much I pay. Now widen that out, I go to a chiropractor next road, on, yeah, on this road, and there was work going on. It actually shut him down for a few days. And the company doing it was from Newark, Delaware. I had nothing against the work, I lived there. But I have a question, was there no business, no construction company in Elton that could have done that job? I know three that were capable. The curious thing is that we're in a tough economic situation and if the town or the county spends money and they don't seek out local businesses first to offer them the opportunity to make a bid, aren't we hurting ourselves? I don't think that it takes a degree in economics to understand what a multiplier effect is. Every dime that is spent, every dollar that's spent locally multiplies itself and comes back. Thinking about this is sort of like, well, what's missing? Why didn't the police department come to me on the block down and say, yeah, pens? Perhaps it's because they don't know I exist, not that that's their fault. But what I'm wondering is, is couldn't a database be set up of the businesses that are here in Elton and the services that they offer so that when purchases are made, that the purchaser consults the database to see if there's a Elton business that can provide the service and at least be offered the opportunity to bid? And maybe a little latitude is given in some of the bidding? Maybe the fellow that could have repaired that street may not have been the lower bidder. But then again, the multiplier effect comes in and any business that he gets is gonna be returned to the town in the form of taxes. These are observations, they're not criticisms. Perhaps you've discussed all this stuff before, there's no way for me to know. But I just figured, shoot, I'll throw in my two cents, although I'm not a voter here, I am a taxpayer. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming in.
Thank you, very interesting. Okay, I haven't heard nothing else, do I have a motion to adjourn?
Yes, sir.
One second. All those in favor?
Aye.
This meeting is adjourned.